I call this March 12, 2013, City Council meeting to order. Indication, does anybody want to give the indication? Do you have volunteers for the indication? All right, there we go.
Dear Lord, thank you for this city, thank you for our great mayor and council, thank you for this wonderful springtime weather, and thank you for bringing us all here together tonight to govern our own area. Amen.
All right, well, good job. Okay, all right. Can you call the roll of the paperwork?
Yes, Mayor Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Chase Williams, District 1.
Here.
Councilmember Iron, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember Gaviea, District 4.
Here.
All right. We all please stand in for the pledge.
Our pledge begins with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, opening remarks. I have a couple of things to do real quick. I'd like to welcome, I just saw them walk in, Mayor Davis from Dunwoody.
Other Mayor Davis.
The other Mayor Davis from Dunwoody. And Dunwoody Councilmember Terry Nall, the best dressed councilman in town. Welcome, and thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to make another announcement. We have a brand new finance director here in the city of Brookhaven, and her name is Bonnie Klein. She comes just from the city of McDonough, where she was finance director down there, and she comes highly recommended. And Bonnie, if you please stand up, and please welcome Ms. Klein to the city of Brookhaven. And your husband's here as well. What's his name? Carl Klein? Thank you, thank you for coming to Brookhaven. Glad to work with you. Thank you. Okay. Also, I'll have a couple more announcements. Where is J.D.? Did he charge leave?
No, he's here.
Okay. J.D. J.D. Cockadale's last official day with the city was on Friday, and I wanted to recognize his contributions to the city, and everybody in the council does as well. So I have a proclamation here that I'm going to read out real quick. Yeah, if you could come to the podium and...
Whereas J.D. Cockadale has been an involvement with the Brookhaven community and an integral part of the corporation and development of the city of Brookhaven, whereas Mr. Cockadale served as the deputy city manager, leading multiple initiatives while providing project management in exemplary manner during the startup of the city and the Brookhaven Municipal Court, whereas J.D. Cockadale served as the co-chair for both the Contracts and Proposals Committee and the Police Committee for the Governor's Commission on Brookhaven, and whereas as the co-chair of the Contracts and Proposals Committee, J.D. was responsible for facilitating the privatization of services such as public works, parks and recreation, community development, communications and community engagement, finance administration, information technology and municipal court, and whereas J.D. Cockadale worked diligently and tirelessly throughout this solicitation for bids, evaluation of submitted proposals and recommendations for service providers. Therefore, I, J.Maxx Davis, am here with the city of Brookhaven to hereby recognize and commend J.D. Cockadale for his services to the city of Brookhaven.
I also have a little plaque for such a large guy here. It says, "J.D. Cockadale, Deputy City Manager, 2012-2013, in appreciation of your dedication, vision and leadership during the establishment of the city of Brookhaven." Thank you, J.D. There you go, sir. Thank you. Would you be able to make any comments? I'd like to hear from you.
I'll make it shorter than the indication. I've truly, I have been working on the city for so many, over two years, and it has been a true pleasure to be a part of the startup and see, and really see the results of what we've been able to deliver for the citizens of Brookhaven, and to be able to leave knowing that we have such great council, mayor, and then staff that are handling the city business. So it's a great company to know after two years of work that it's in good hands, and I think we're well to go on our way to a great future with it.
Thank you, J.D. Thank you for your service, and what service you'll give in the future too. Thank you so much. Now, given this proclamation, do you need... Hey, J.D., I did sign, yes, I did sign. I'll take that off there. J.D., if you want to come get your proclamation too. Yes. Thank you. Now, did you get a Chick-fil-A sandwich?
I did, thank you.
Okay, that's part of that package too. Yeah, and you know, we're here this first time, we're going to be meeting here regularly from now on, except for next, except for next being, I'll talk about that in one second. But J.D., basically, he's the one that helped build this court and was responsible with some other folks with IT and whatnot. But the reason we're here, and the way it looks tonight, the way it looks and the way we're set up, we're all within code, and we have our ORI number, is all because of efforts of people like J.D. Cockadale. So we appreciate you there as well. Thank you, J.D. Um, is it on my... Oh, I was excited before I leave early. Our next council meeting, just as I've said, we're going to be meeting here, will be, will be at the DeKalb Path Academy, which is runoff, Ashford, Dunwoody, I'm sorry, Fisher Industrial. If you take a left at Overthorpe University right there, Winneater, I'm sorry, Hermance, is it before, that's before Overthorpe. Don't get me confused. It's on the right-hand side of Hermance before you get to Windsor Parkway. It's at DeKalb County Schools, it's DeKalb Path Academy. It's kind of tucked back there, but it's a fairly good central location. We're going to be having our next council meeting there at 6:00, and then at 7:00, the new superintendent for DeKalb Schools, Michael Thurman, will be present, and he'll be there to make a short presentation and take questions from the audience. And after that 30-minute period, we're going to have, hopefully, we're still working on getting these people here, several representative of Tom Taylor and several representative of Mike Jacobs and possibly Senator Fran Malara, and maybe some other folks from Dunwoody who've been working on the possibility of, you know, of creating a city school system in Dunwoody, and we'd like to consider all our options here. We have no planes in Brookhaven, we have no jurisdiction over our schools, but we're following this intently with all the news that's going about the DeKalb County Schools. We want to be up to date on all that, and we want to be involved, and let our citizens have the chance to be involved, and it's something that we could pursue or should pursue if we hear from the community. They want to pursue, so just part of due diligence in my mind to have this forum after our city council meeting on the 26th at DeKalb Path Academy, so please invite all of you to attend, and tell your friends and neighbors, it'll be on the website and it'll be noticed in the press as well. So thank you. All right, now, agenda announcements, we're going to make a couple changes, all right? We're going to be removing L1, which is consideration approval, it's the actual item L1. Do you have a motion for that?
We do.
L1, is this what I was...
Yes.
That's the policy.
What about I4 also?
I4, solid battleship.
It's a solid benefit.
And solid defense, I4 and L1 and I... L1 and I4. So I'll entertain motions about removing those two items tonight.
I move, we remove item I4 and item L1 from the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, for discussion? All in favor of removing those two items from the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We're also going to amend whatever the section was about our alcohol board. What section we named, there's number M1. We're going to remove M1 to this, to this part of the agenda right now. Can we do that? All right. Is there a motion on the floor to move M1 to the top of the agenda here?
I'll move, we move M1 to the top of the agenda.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor of moving M1 to the top of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. M1 is, so can I go to that right now?
Mayor, if I could, I'd also ask that you remove, or defer item I10 to the next regular scheduled meeting. They've given some additional language as of last night on the police services that we need to review.
This is the police service of the IGA. There's never been harm was by movement until that's been corrected.
That would be correct.
All right.
And further, if you will, go ahead and take the item I8 off of I8 and put it to new business because the county as of this afternoon has consented to give us the additional time that we requested for, for make polling the citizenry as to whether or not they want one or two times a week, so they push that back a little 30 if that shows as much as possible percent. So we can just take it on to new business. If you sure will, we'll pass it out over very quickly.
Okay, is that two, do you need two motions or you're going to do it in one? Mr. Mayor, I move that we remove item I8 from the consent agenda, which is the consideration for the IGA with, for solid waste management services to the new business section of the agenda, and also that we remove item I10 from the consent agenda, the IGA for police services to table until next, until next council meeting.
Take what's the sentence to defer, right? Okay, all right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of removing those two items to the, deferring to the next council meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Okay, now we can go to the, um, I1, right? Correct?
How's it count?
No, this is my first, it's on the, on this part of the agenda. M1 is appointment of our alcohol board. This is one of those boards, it's very important to the city of Brookhaven. Murray or Daryl, if you want to discuss exactly what that is, we're quick to do a note of the alcohol board is.
The alcohol, the alcohol board does appeal for decisions of...
Is your microphone on?
The alcohol board. The alcohol board is an appeals for the administrative decisions of the staff as to whether or not to suspend or revoke the license, or well, it's actually the decision of the staff is gone, goes to the alcohol board for them to make the determination, should they suspend or revoke alcohol licenses for infractions that would have, could have, may have occurred in their licensure, such as selling to underage persons, selling after good hours, or not, or other types of infractions that they would have under alcohol.
Okay. So it's a board that, so anybody that has a license to sell or serve alcohol, like elegant packer stores, grocery stores, and restaurants and bars.
That's correct.
Grocery shops.
Grocery shops.
All right.
Grocery stores.
Right. So this is an important board because you can, cities can get in trouble if they have a record of not enforcing the alcohol laws properly, if you're leaning on people who break that law. And so when I was considering who to put on this board, I had some recommendations, and I had some advice from council about the type of people you'd want, is people with integrity, who you trust, because in some areas I've heard that there have been problems with people taking a case of Jack Daniels to just let somebody have their license. And we didn't want to have that kind of situation in Brookhaven. So I wanted to make sure we had smart people, people with integrity, deciding what happens with alcohol licenses in the city of Brookhaven. And I have some suggestions from council, these are the people that I have gotten and I would like to submit for appointment to the alcohol board. If you please stand or call your name. Joseph F. Pontan. Pontan. Joseph P. Pontan, I'm sorry, Joseph P. Pontan, okay. Sorry about that. He was my buddy, I didn't even get his name right. Second, yes. Adam Kasky. All right. Gwani Fagundo. Richard Grice. And Michael Arnett. All right. These are the five people that I've nominated to the alcohol board. If there's a motion, if they have to do a motion, except that somebody could do that for me, please.
Do you want to make a motion right front, mayor?
Just say, we have to be ratified their appointments for the alcohol board. Second?
Second.
Any discussion, or any comments about these people? I could give you, I can give you a little bit of a... Did you have something, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Pontan is senior director of tax at Georgia Pacific. He lives in the Brookhaven neighborhood, one of my neighbors and friends, and I know him very well. He's 19 years experience in the tax field. And Adam Kasky is another attorney. He's, you do business law, that's what I understand, and also he helps with the, he helps organize the Brookhaven Bolt Race. So that's a, he's also a community volunteer that gives money to Ashford Park Elementary still over here, so thank you for doing that. Gwani Fagundo, I know Gwani from my time with Brookhaven, yes, and she's also an attorney, knows there are a lot of attorneys on this board. And she, she does important law, very competent attorney, and speaks for mine, which I appreciate. Richard Grice is an attorney with Global Finance and Debt Products. He lives sort of near me, off of Vindman Drive. He's been a resident for quite some time, and he's got a very good reputation as seller position in the legal world as well. And we have Michael Arnett, who is the, he's not a lawyer, he's a restaurant... So he's, he's the voice of reason on the board. I wanted somebody on the board who had experience in the restaurant bar industry, and he owns Haven Restaurant and Meliza Restaurant. Yes, and so we have somebody in Brookhaven who will be sitting on the alcohol board who has firsthand experience with these kind of policies and licenses and procedures, and please go into his restaurant, because this is very, restaurants, and they're very...
Everyone's in the bar.
Yes. You've got a bus waiting outside.
Take dividends?
Yeah. But thank you for your willingness to serve. We'll go ahead and vote on this. All in favor of adopting, of approving these nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, you're appointed, thank you. If you stick around, I'll swear you in. If you want to come on up, I'll swear you in. This is a long oath, so if you're unscathed on your feet...
Can they come over here and sign?
Okay.
He's after you, Mr. Mayor.
And if I go too fast, please stop. On my honor, aye, state your name.
You got it, you got it. You have to me, please.
On my honor, aye, state your name.
On my honor, aye.
You solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute...
You solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute...
...the office of Alcohol Hearing Board of the city of Brookhaven...
The office of Alcohol Hearing Board of the city of Brookhaven.
...and will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
...support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...the Constitution of Georgia...
The Constitution of Georgia.
...and the Charter, ordinances and regulations...
Charter, ordinances and regulations.
...of the city of Brookhaven.
Of the city of Brookhaven.
I'm not the holder of any unaccountable public money...
I'm not a little unaccountable public money.
...due this state...
Due this state.
...or any political subdivision...
Or any political subdivision.
...or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
I'm not the holder of any office of trust...
I'm not the holder of any office of trust.
...under the government of the United States...
Under the government of the United States.
...any other state...
Any other state.
...or any foreign state...
Or any foreign state.
...which I am by the laws of the state of Georgia...
Which I am by the laws of the state of Georgia.
...and prohibited from holding.
And prohibited from holding.
I'm otherwise qualified to hold said office...
I'm otherwise qualified to hold said office.
...according to the Constitution and law of Georgia.
According to the Constitution and law of Georgia.
I'll perform the duties of my office in the best interest of the city of Brookhaven...
I will perform the duties of my office.
...of the office in the best interest of the city of Brookhaven. ...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...without fear...
Without fear.
...favor...
Favor.
...appetition...
Appetition.
...rewards...
Rewards.
...or expectation thereof.
Or expectation thereof.
Congratulations. Thank you. Go silent. I want to put that pause on the unaccountable public money portion. took the oath. Thank you all, if you don't need to take off, that's fine, if you want to stick around, that's fine too. We appreciate you coming. All right, now we're going to open the public hearing on the budget. Chris, do you want to do a quick presentation and...
I certainly can, if I, Mr. Mayor. The budget that you have before you is...
Is that microphone, is it on? Just move it up.
It is on.
If you move it forward a little bit.
So I think...
He's got that thing like a rock star right now.
But the budget that's, that's been announced, it is developed on inspection online, you have copies to look at. The current version reflects some of the direction and changes that was given to staff at the last meeting. We will announce the intent of council to adopt the budget at our next meeting, and at this time, I would certainly invite you to open it up to public comment.
All right. All right, the public comment portion of the public hearing is now open. Does anybody want to make a comment? Please step forward. We haven't any names yet. Susan?
I think we have one that wants to...
All right.
I think we'll need to sign it.
The signing sheets are right up here if you want to make any comments about the budget.
This is Mr. Aubrey Balans.
Yes.
I'll be very quick. I dialed 411 today and asked for Brookhaven, Georgia, and they said there is no Brookhaven, Georgia. And I said, I'm standing in the lobby of City Hall, there is, and they said, there is not, and so I told Diana that, but you might want to correct that.
I had somebody tell me they went to get a driver's license and asked for the same thing, and they, they said, no, it's not on our computer, it does not exist.
I said, it does.
Yes. We'll work on that, thank you.
Okay, is there any more public comment about the budget? Anything? Going once? Twice, all right? Public hearings, public comment sections closed.
With the close of the public comment, public hearing section, I'd invite you to ask any questions if you might have, otherwise we've closed the public hearing.
When will this revised budget be posted on the website, or has it been posted?
This, this, the current version that you're looking at now is online. Now, if there are any direction to staff to make any changes, whenever we get them, we'll run them through, do all the number crunching, and then we'll release an updated one and post it online as well.
I think one of the things we talked about in the work session was to take comparative columns, so we'll do that, post that ASAP on the website also?
Yes, absolutely. Next version will have those columns.
Do you know where that will be?
Let me get some direction on the IGA from the city manager's office, and hopefully we can have that up in two to three days.
Excellent, thank you.
And this, this version doesn't include the IGA's, includes the police one, right, but not the parks one?
That is correct.
Okay.
Chris, could you just help us understand that this is a fluid document, that a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts, and maybe you can just kind of tell us briefly what those are that need to settle in before we kind of hit a final, final document?
Absolutely. The, the budget itself is a policy, and just like any other policy that you adopt, it's subject to change, given the times and the dynamics that you face, that will constantly be changing as well. I will say, as recently as last night, the city of Dunwoody amended their 2012 budget. So it's, it's not something that is etched in stone, and it's not something that should stay etched in stone. When priorities change, when circumstances change, you want your budget to reflect those changes as well.
But would you agree that it'll be important for us to hear what the tax digest is, what the host rate is, what the DeKalb millage rate is? Will those things all affect our budget?
They, they can and should, absolutely. They don't necessarily have to. You could say, for example, host, we budgeted 3 million, and we find out based on county assumptions and decisions that we're going to get 5 million. You could decide not to utilize that 2 million, just leave your budget at 3. Or you could decide to come back and say, we want to use that 2 million dollars. It's entirely up to council's discretion.
And we should be getting the tax digest within a month or so, is that your understanding?
The, or so.
Or so.
I would say.
And how will that inform our budget?
We'll have a better indication of what the real property taxes will be, and at the same time the tax digest comes out, it's not too long after when the county sets their tax rates, which affects what we get for host. We, we do have a fair estimate as to what sales did last year, they were up slightly, but it's not going to have a big bearing on the host amount like the decisions of the county will do.
And can you tell from just, it seems like it's very busy in our front window, where we're taking in permits and business licenses, can you, I know we've only been open a couple of months, but can you tell if those revenues are coming in as projected or higher?
I haven't compared a business to business number to see are the sales higher or lower. All I know is from January 18th or 17th, when the moratorium was lifted, until the end of February, we collected roughly half a million, I think 513,000 maybe, in occupation taxes. That's the only number I have off the top of my head, but I, I do know that number. I haven't checked it since March 1st, but they are, they're coming in. The word's out, people have the forms, they're following them, they're coming in. We are getting a lot of compliments from the staff at the front window, they seem to be doing a very good job of providing good customer service to businesses.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Consent agenda. Okay. Can we, can we do these first three in one, or wait to do each individually?
We can do all of them.
Oh, all of them, okay. All eight, all seven? All seven, seven, nine, and 10? Do you need a reader? Is our first consent agenda, so where, where was it? Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll send it.
Yeah, what are you moving?
We're doing the...
All seven.
Just form of the motion, motion, motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay.
Approval to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So second. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion on a consent agenda. If they want to take something off the consent agenda, you can amend the motion and remove something, but we'll put it on the regular agenda.
No, I just wanted to find out more about that change of power.
Can we take item number seven off of the consent agenda, I'm sorry, for consideration now?
Since we have a motion, it would be, a motion to approve and remove and...
Admit.
You amend that motion to remove item number seven to the, to the new business agenda.
Yeah, Mike.
Make the motion to amend, that'll work, council member.
You have permission to amend.
Thank you.
You made it a final amendment though.
There you have it.
We're doing training, now we use all of your language. Final amendments, you have my consent, all of them.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, but that we remove items number seven and remove it to the new business.
Is there a discussion on that? What's the reason for that?
I, I just wanted to hear more details about...
Yeah, questions?
Okay. Was there anything else that we wanted to have more detail on off the agenda?
No.
All right.
All the amendments, any votes on them? Both the amendments, and you'll vote on the main motion.
Okay. All in favor of adopting the amendment as stated by Councilman Irish, signify yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, um, vote, uh, all in favor of adopting the motion as stated by Councilman Gebbia, please signify yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Now, first, please amend that consent agenda pass it with the amendments stated. All right.
Excuse me, Mayor, the general public comment, we need to have that, but I don't have any names so far.
H? Oh, that wasn't a part of the... Okay, now we can have public comment. So if anybody has any public comments about anything else, please, uh, come on up or fill out a form. Councilman Noll, you have anything to comment on?
Who invited a politician up to say something?
Thank you.
All right, I guess that, unless you want to say something? All right, go on, throw it up.
You're my word. You invited me up.
Just state your name and where you live so we can have it for the agenda.
My name is Terry Noll. I live at 1344 Vernon North Drive in Dunwoody, Georgia. Delighted to be here in your new court, to be at your council meeting, and actually, I think it's my first council meeting that you've had, because I know you've had a series of them as you've been busy. And just, uh, also want to say congratulations. I enjoyed being at the grand opening of your, uh, City Hall, um, just around the 4th of March. I know it's temporary, but we're delighted to have you nearby. And congratulations, and we'll be talking more to you about some of these issues. You mentioned the schools, uh, earlier in the meeting, and, uh, perhaps even a consolidated fire department in the future too. Thank you very much.
Will you be able to make a talk late on March 26th meeting?
Yes, I just, I just marked it on my calendar. And that was 6 o'clock for the...
Uh, 6 o'clock for the council, 7 o'clock for the hearing, or the town, the meeting with Superintendent Thurman.
Be happy to be there.
Thank you very much. All right. Any more comments? Anyone have anything? All right. Public comment section is closed. All right, we can move to... Did you hear announcements? Any announcements over there? All right, if you have any council announcements.
I was just going to say, I want to announce again that, that, that thanks to staff for helping, uh, the Brookhaven Post, we're streaming, uh, live the meetings, uh, and I appreciate your, your effort to provide the bandwidth that was necessary to make that happen. I hope that, you know, we run some to put the pajamas on watches, uh, on the computer, but we do have that capability now, and, uh, I think that's a, a step that, in the right direction as far as, uh, getting us out to more of the citizens of Brookhaven. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right. Uh, reports and presentations. Any reports, no, all right. Any, any have one?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought we were going to go later in the agenda. Uh, Mr. Flackadel is just to give you a briefing, as he did in the work session, on, um, the status of the court and where we are.
All right, Jody. Not going to give you another plaque because you're still working here, no.
I got my check for the sandwich.
You can pull the microphone up.
Uh, sorry, guys. So, let me give you a quick, quick update on the court. I want to emphasize a couple of things tonight, that one, we managed to build this court in three to four weeks. Uh, that has happened through the work of the staff, uh, there's a few people back in here, uh, some great contractors. Couple of things I want to emphasize, we've made a tremendous amount of progress on the court. We've gotten judges, all right, the solicitor, obviously furnished the entire, the entire court. It's now prepared for a commission meeting, board meetings, council, uh, courtroom. We even have things as fancy as the eye in the sky behind you. So the only people back here, we can watch here, make sure they're stayed in line. So a lot of progress has have been made. Uh, we do have citations for the City of Brookhaven that the Police Department for Kent County will write, although we did void ticket number one, so that no one had to get the first ticket in the City of Brookhaven. We avoided that, and it will be framed in City Hall with no money and no one's name attached to it. Um, I do want to emphasize, though, how much money we have saved in the development of the court. We have saved just $8,000 to $10,000 on furnishings alone. The, the risers that you're sitting in front of, uh, part of the staff, the current staff, saved $2,000 on the stuff you are sitting on.
Well, these chairs are great, by the way.
The, the chairs we stole. The, the furnishings here, though, uh, just to give you a sense of what the staff has done for the citizens of Brookhaven, we have saved what is really the equivalent of probably 26 to 34 people's tax bills for the city. And that is getting three, three to four quotes on everything, and having the staff go and actually go to furniture liquidators and find other things. We actually saved $3,000 on a $6,000 club by going out and getting ourselves. Um, the one thing I do, I do want to share stories, and these are my party words, is we had a vendor who came into the court one day and said, "Well, we're going to be your preferred vendor." And I said, "Well, can you find..." So everybody see the chairs you're sitting on, right, these nice plastic ones? I asked the vendor, I said, "Can you get us cheap, used, nice chairs?" And I said, "Well, we can't do that. We work on state contract." To which my response was, "It's going to be hard to do business with the City of Brookhaven if you can't reduce costs." So they have done a phenomenal job. I appreciate the opportunity to put this court together. Uh, if there's any operational questions that they have to do with the court structure, or how the, how the court will actually run internally, or things involving prisoner transport, those types of things, I will refer them to our solicitor, Bill Riley, as that will be involved in court operations. And anything involving judges and that type of thing.
JD, can you quickly tell us what's, I mean, we, we know it's here because we're in this room, but what's all around us? What's in, what does this involve?
Oh, so you have the grand tour, yeah.
Just quickly.
We have a handicap ramp over here. No. We have, so this is the dais, the judge, for everybody behind me, feel weird talking when everyone's behind me. Uh, for everyone behind me, where Mr. Mary Davis is sitting is where the judge is going to sit. Uh, we'll have the court clerks, uh, relocated over here. Uh, we will have probably a clerk on the, on the bench next to the judge. We'll have probation services. I believe we're going to end up in the back of the room. And then we'll have the solicitor office separate for a reason, separate from the probation, so solicitor be in the back, and then judge's chambers in the back. And then you'll see some secure doors in the back. There's a bolt on this one. That's the cash room. And then there's a even more important room in behind here, it's called the GCIC room, which is the GBI compliance, but no one can have access to that except for individuals like Daniel Swetis, who are GCIC certified.
That's the tech private.
That is the tech private information, because they will be running things with individuals in the City of Brookhaven or other people who have received tickets. We will be processing traffic tickets, code violations, misdemeanor cases as a court sorcerer, um, and, and also traffic accidents, and we do know that there is a stack of tickets waiting for us when we, uh, officially operate the court.
So you said mission probation will be in the back. Is there going to be like a cubicle or divider or something for them right there so they aren't talking during the, you don't hear the...
They will talk, but they will have dividers.
Okay, good. All right. All right. Thank you very much, JD.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it, and again, um, good work on this and everything else that you did. Thank you. All right. Any other reports? All right. Old business. Actually, I'm, we took this one off. That one came off. All right, number two. Consideration approval ordinance 2013 dash 03 dash 01 to amend Chapter 4 alcohol beverages of the Code of City of Brookhaven, Georgia.
If I may, I'll present that. Mayor, council, this is your, this is your second read on your, uh, on your grower ordinance, and, uh, that you, you've already, spine tasting this grower, tasting, uh, and growers. This is the ordinance you already approved on a one read, and this is your second read on your two read approval.
Just may I amend that we approve ordinance... Is that a zero or... 2013?
Zero.
Zero, 2013 dash 03 dash 01, amend Chapter 4 alcoholic beverages of the Code of the City of Brookhaven, Georgia, to amend and provide certain definitions, to authorize certain types of establishments to sell beer and wine, to authorize wine tastings and malt beverage tastings, to authorize use of grounds for certain packaged malt beverage licenses and for other purposes. Second read.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance, signify yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? New business. Um, we already did that. Okay.
Tell me if you have any, council member.
All right, number two. Consideration approval of one read ordinance. You got this one, Bill?
Yes. Mayor and council, all we have adopted, all the, uh, all the ordinance violation, which are the quite criminal, um, violations such as disorderly conduct. We, we took all those from DeKalb County and our omnibus ordinance that we approved on the first evening. What we have here is, uh, we're ordinance creating a violation for violating a summons. That is, if you are giving, giving a summons to appear in court, uh, and you do not appear, that constitutes another ordinance violation. What that does is it gives us the opportunity just to get a regular warrant rather than a bench warrant, to bring people in on a regular warrant. It's a practical matter. Uh, those cases are, are never tried, but, uh, they're, they're dismissed after they're appealed to court and brought in on their underlying charge. But it's the methodology that we use to get people in after they fail to appear on a summons. This is a one read ordinance, and then we'll, we'll have a, uh, we'll have a first read. If you determine you wish to approve the one read ordinance.
Is there a motion?
I move we approve one read ordinance 02013 dash 03 dash 02, an ordinance to adopt provisions of Chapter 9 municipal court of the Code of the City of Brookhaven, adding section 9 dash 7, making it a violation for failure to appear pursuant to summons in municipal court.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I want to say I'm glad we, we have that FTA thing here, because it is a useful tool. And, uh, any more discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance, signify yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right, my permit is admitted, so it is passed. Number three is the first read. All right.
Mayor and council, this is a first read consideration approval of ordinance 020130303, an ordinance to adopt provisions in Chapter 9 municipal court of the Code of the City of Brookhaven, adding section 9.7, making it a violation for failure to appear pursuant to summons in municipal court. This is a first read.
Number four. Consideration approval of one read ordinance. You want to do that one?
This is, um, um, this is the audit committee?
Good evening again. At the last council meeting, the discussion came up as to, uh, some of the pros and cons of establishing an audit committee and the direction it's given to see some language reflecting uh, what a audit committee should look like for Brookhaven. Uh, I have incorporated the edits that came back to me into this document here in front of you, and at this time, I'd like to open it up to any questions.
Any questions? All right, no questions.
Well, comment, not a question. I just want to thank you for, for answering the questions that I put forth uh, during the, during the review period, and I know some of them were a little bit odd. I'm not an accountant and a... But again, I appreciate you, uh, and, and, and I noticed a reading through there that, that most of them have been put back into the, into the policy, and I appreciate that consideration.
I appreciate it too. Anything else? All right. No?
You need, you require a motion in form.
All right. Motion? Wait, any motions?
I move we approve a one read ordinance 2013 dash 03 dash 04, amending Chapter 2 by adding section 2 dash 6.7, audit committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance, signify yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, my permit is admitted, so it is passed. Number five?
Number five, Mayor and council, is consideration approval of ordinance 2013 dash 03 dash 05, amending Chapter 2 by adding section 2.67, audit committee first read.
Number six?
Mayor and council, this is consideration approval of one read ordinance 2013 03 06, repealing Chapter 15, Article 8, entitled multi-family rental housing, and amending Chapter 18 nuisances by adding Article 5, multi-family rental housing in the Code of Ordinances. This has previously been, um, presented to you in the work session.
Uh, is there a motion for?
I move we approve a one read ordinance, uh, 2013 dash 03 dash 06, repealing Chapter 15, Article 8, titled multi-family rental housing, and amending Chapter 18 nuisances by adding Article 5, multi-family resi- resi- rental housing in the Code of Ordinances with the following changes.
Um, JD, you said Article 8, I think it's Article 13.
I'm sorry, 13. My Latin. Article 13. Uh, with the following changes. Uh, we're going to change the inspection, uh, the required annual inspections to, uh, one-third of the units after the first year. Uh, we're going to change the, um, uh, the notice to the complex to, from five days to 48 hours. And I believe that's it.
The two-year...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, the, the certificate of occupancy, uh, the, the requirement for, for reinspection doesn't kick in until, uh, two years after a certificate of occupancy is issued for a new, uh, new apartment complex.
Can I bump that motion? Is there a second?
I second.
Uh, all in, any discussion?
Hello. And I don't know if we want to add this, but there was a, there were some comments made that right now, our, the ordinance begins at four units in a complex, defines the complex as four units. Um, it was pointed out that several, uh, local citizens own four units as a, as a, as an investment property, and can we bump that number to five, six, seven, eight? Eight was probably the beginning of the, quote, um, managed apartments, um, from my experience. Do we want to consider amending to, to increase the number to something that gets more into the apartment? I'm sorry, gets more to the apartment, right? Yeah, more, more into a managed apartment versus a, versus an individual, and, and actually staff has a comment on that.
I'm, I'm, you can be the one, it's not here, but...
Right. My only comment for them would be, uh, if we could wait on that, because I don't know if that change triggers any definitions in our zoning ordinance or could affect how we define multi-family or attached units, or, um, you know, what are, um, multiple unit definitions? So that's, that's my...
And if we not want to have inspection on places that's got four people, four separate... I don't know. I think that's probably a good thing.
I, I, I think it's, I think it's more an issue of putting the burden on a, on an individual to, A, get a business license, which just requires four units that...
It's a business.
Is it a business?
Yeah.
That's business, yeah. You have four, you have building with four units on it, that's maybe seems like it's a rental income. It's powered by the rest.
So if I'm under your... So, so if you have four houses that you're running in Brookhaven, you need a business license?
No, this is just for attached units.
But I'm saying that if you have, if you as an individual are managing four houses, why is that different than four, four apartments in one town?
Well, it's part of a multi-family dwelling thing rather than a...
But if four rental units is a business, why is it different?
It's a good question. I'd love to ask that. You need to have it considered.
I'm just...
Staff? Hello? State law addresses when residential property requires an occupation tax. If the only purpose of the owner or manager being on site is to show the property or to make a repair, an occupation tax is not required. Occupation tax is when you're actually conducting a business, such as running community events, operating a swimming pool, rent program within the complex, etc., where there's an onsite person showing the homes, etc. So, in the case where I just go buy an investment property, I may live in Brookhaven or live somewhere else, uh, but I only go to the property to actually rent it out to show it to someone or to make a repair, I do not need an occupation tax in that case. So, and that was, just on that specific question you had, uh, it, it may not be an issue at all.
So a quadruplex would that be?
Well, that may not affect the business occupation tax, but it does affect life safety. And the building code would govern what is a multiple unit, attached units, and do, are sprinklers required, you know, depending on the, the certain number of units that trigger that. So, I'm happy to...
That's a great shape to you, man.
Right, and I think we need to take a look at that, you know, just to see if that has an effect on how we define multi-family, not only in the zoning ordinance, but... has an effect on how we define multifamily, not only in the zoning ordinance, but how does the Building Code and the Life Safety Code affect that, outside of the requirements of business occupation tax?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from, I mean, Jim on that one, I would just, I'd just like to hear him.
That's fine. No, I understand. Well, we approve this, we really would have the right to come back and amend, pending advice of.
Anything more?
Just pending advice of. Committee.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of the motion as stated before the comment section, signify yourself by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? My clerk, please enter the record that this ordinance has passed. Number seven is the first read, right? Is that all we are?
Yes. Mayor and Council, this is consideration approval of ordinance 20130307, repealing Chapter 15, Article 8, titled "Multi-Family Rental Housing," amending Chapter 18, nuisances, by adding Article 5, "Multi-Family Rental Housing" in the Code of ordinances. This is a first read.
All right, number eight?
Mayor and Council, this is consideration approval of one-read ordinance 20130308, granted to Atlanta Gas Light Company, a Georgia corporation hereafter designated as company and successors and assigns the right and franchise to use and occupy the streets, avenues, roads, and places in the city of Brookhaven, Georgia.
This item for you contains the standard language that you see with the Atlanta Gas Light franchises all over the state. We have the final numbers, and I believe they've been communicated to included in this document. In looking at the figures that they gave us just today, there was a positive variance over what the feasibility recorded as revenues. It wasn't a lot, but it's a little under $40,000 or more than what was shown in the feasibility study. So that nice little plus in there. But other than that, it's pretty much standard language, and certainly open it up to any questions if you have.
This is something that people already pay, all across the state.
I'm having flashbacks in Comcast. I believe that is the case.
I'm pretty sure.
Manufacturing. Are we going to see oil wells in our right of ways? It's listed, "Unnecessary means for manufacturing, transmitting, distributing, or selling of natural coming gas." What is, what is the definition of manufacturing gas?
I'll defer to legal on that. Ken, would you say we want to do that?
Neither do I, but I mean, we're permitting them to if they'd like to do so.
I think there's, I think there's never been an oil or gas strike in the state of Georgia.
Actually, we have some shell of the northwest corner now.
All right, we haven't gotten any gas out of it yet.
Okay.
I would tell you, council member, this is the standard contract that Atlanta's natural gas offers to everyone, and there not been a very near contract with us. This is the same contract that's done what he has, John's Creek, everybody else has on it, and they have not yet started manufacturing gas in any of those cities at this point.
Is this the same, there's something you may know about or have been following, the gas regulator and the gas replacement in the Claremont Road area. Does this, would this permit that type of facility being built in a public right of way?
I think the public right of way is under for the lines, it's not for a facility, is it? I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't put a facility in a public right of way. I don't think it's a, I don't think that's feasible.
Traffic.
Yeah, I don't think it's a, I think the right of way is specifically for gas lines. I don't know that you could put a manufactured facility inside of a tenor right of way.
It would be an awfully small facility.
To use and occupy the streets, avenues, roads, public highways, alleys for manufacturing, distributing, selling, getting what you got, so this is, I'm just curious. I mean, I know that there's been a lot of discussion by folks just outside Brookhaven about a gas regulator that's being installed over in the Century Center area, right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and I'm just curious if this would permit that same type of.
Isn't that private property?
No, they, well, they're purchasing a private parcel.
Yeah, this doesn't apply to private property.
Well, but again, it would allow them to do, to construct that type of facility, I would assume.
Not in the, I mean, you're talking about a private parcel, and this is talking about only the public right of ways.
No, I'm talking about the facility, not the, not the land. I'm just curious, I, I don't know what this entails, what this involves, I just know that, you know, it's been in the headlines in our part of the world recently.
Thank you. If you don't know, we don't know.
Yeah. I've never seen any circumstance where that's come up, but the language says what it says.
All right. So what are we on that? This is the one, we're in this discussion, one discussion, is, any more discussion on that?
I guess my other question is, can we say no to certain things?
We can say no to anything.
I mean, zoning wouldn't, I mean, we'd have, wouldn't it be so for our zoning, right of way, though, exactly?
Public safety, I, I believe it fractures down to the legal question of, is there an ability to modify the agreement? If so, what's the timeframe?
You certainly can ask. That's all I can tell you. We reviewed it for conformity as what was the standards, and that's, and we found it to conform to their standard agreement, we've approved on various other occasions. If you desire for us to go back and see if we can get the Atlanta Gas Light Company to modify their agreement, we're certainly willing to go.
Just identify what is manufactured, which is a traditional question.
For reading all ordinance, all what we're approving, it says the means to manufacture. So what that says to me, there might need a line that goes under a right of way to a manufacturing facility somewhere else. So it says the means of manufacturing and transmitting insured gas. I don't think it means, I don't think this says the means to, the ability to manufacture and plant, that manufactures gas, it says provide them with the means to manufacture gas. And that's our right of ways. So having gas going on our streets, or some product that a manufacturing facility needs is, I think, what this addresses. It doesn't say anything about manufacturing a gas facility, it says means to manufacture.
Yeah, it's, Jim, were you talking about the gas line, instead of like a blowout to by PDK?
Yeah, the regulator.
You know, and that buy the product, piece of product property on there. But I can understand, your concern is, what if they want to find a piece of a park?
Or, well, I'd miss you. Or, and that for everyone's side of the road to build up.
Well, this has parks in it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you're right, it does.
I mean.
And other public places, yeah.
Is there any, is there any downside to laying this to ask them to, I mean, from a financial standpoint?
I don't, I don't believe so. We can simply do the first read, and then the second read at the next meeting and not do the one-read ordinance. If you have a little time to talk with them.
Interesting, interesting.
There's no amendment required for that, is there? We sit the first, where should we read then?
Or not, or why from the second? Or not, for no motion to approve?
Just asking to be sure that we don't jeopardize ourselves in losing any.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's my concern, since we delay it 30 days or lose it 30 days forever.
I wouldn't suggest delaying it that long, but I don't think it's a, it's an issue.
Reading this, though, I mean, I'm not doing it that way, but it's, there's a distinction in the language between having our right of ways and then the necessary means for manufacturing. So, it doesn't say we're granting the right to manufacture, it says giving them the means to manufacture gas wherever they have their facilities. That's what, it says the and distinguishes from the first clause to the second clause. They want to use our right of ways to have a system to distribute and manufacture gas, not to manufacture gas in our right of ways. But we could, that's just a little clumsy language, but.
But I think Bates's point is also well taken about parks and other public places.
Right, yeah, I mean, they might have to run a gas line under a park, or put a regulator.
Well, there's a problem with that, but the blowout regulator, you know, would certainly be a detriment to ours, and, you know, I think that if we could, and their history has shown that if that's the case, they're going to private, you know, areas to do that. But I think if we could get clarification like that, why not, there's a downside.
Yeah, we can have legal look at that, you know, they may have state law on their side, too, where they're already granted rights, this is just putting it down in another.
Kind of like the substation that we have. They need a, they need a blowout bomb so they don't blow up the city of Brookhaven, we need to turn it off somewhere.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to do this as a one-read and a two, the second read the next time. If it's not satisfactory, we can just stop at that point.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, on page three of the agreement, it says to commence as of April 1st, so we adopted on the 3rd, on the 26th, we're still in that window.
Okay, great. Any more discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance, signify yourself by saying aye? Aye. Is that right?
I don't think we have motion on it, yes.
Oh, we haven't, I thought we were in discussion phase.
But we, we had to see the question in the presenter.
Oh. Okay. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider and approve one-read ordinance 2013-03-08, granted to Atlanta Gas Light Company, Georgia Corporation hereafter designated as company, its successors and assigns the right and franchise to use and occupy the streets, avenues, roads, places of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia.
There's a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the motion, signify yourself by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
We're adopting this?
I think we're going to take one. I think we're going to, we're going to a second read. Right?
Well, if you adopt a one-read ordinance, if you adopt a one-read ordinance, it would be adopted. Now, if you do a first read on the two-read ordinance, and you make a determination on the second read you want to amend it, you can certainly amend the two-read ordinance, and then it would supersede the one-read that you passed tonight. And so you could make any changes you wanted on the two, otherwise you could let this die, or you could, or you could vote it down, and we could go ahead and do a one-read ordinance. It's just whatever your pleasure is to get to the result. You can get to the same result either way, it's simply a matter of which way you want to go.
To amend my motion as a two-read ordinance?
Well, we're going to do a first read on the two-read ordinance immediately, following this present, this one-read ordinance presentation, so.
To just let this one die.
Well, if you have a vote on it, so.
You have, you have two.
What is the sense of, would you all rather do it the six, half of the others, six of the other?
If I understand, Council, we have the opportunity to change it.
The two, well, amend the, amend the two.
Add it part of the second read.
That's correct.
And then, okay, so.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
All opposed? My clerk, please enter the record that this has passed. Number nine?
Nine is consideration and approval of ordinance 20130309, granted to Atlanta Gas Light Company, a Georgia corporation hereafter designated as company, its successors and assigned the right and franchise to use and occupy the streets, avenues, roads, places of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia. This is a first read.
Okay. Now, at the end, other business?
We got, we got to deal with.
We've got the table running forward.
I 7. I 7.
I 7. Consideration approval of the Georgia Power Lighting Services Stunna Lease Agreement for the former PCID and the Lake Gardens Project. Does anybody have any, oh, there you are.
Right here.
Just imagine we're here. All right. Questions?
Well, can you just give us a brief overview?
Okay, and actually, what I'll do is, I have Jennifer Hopper here with PCID, and this is related to the project that they are doing on Lake Huron Parkway, Parkside Place and Permanent Sound Parkway. Do you want to make, talk about it, or? I'll let her talk about it, because it's a PCID project.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for considering this. This is our streetscape project that basically encompasses what is remaining of the city of Brookhaven and the PCID boundary, that has not been brought into the multi-use, complete streets, urban feel that we have, and it's not been branded with the green streetlights and the pedestrian classes, seat walls, and all the amenities that we provide, which brands the PCID district. So we've invested, when this project is built, will be about $5.7 million investment. A million of it is the streetlights, which provide the amenity for safety and for pedestrians to get out and walk and, and shop and do their business after work. There's a new hotel going in, we want those guests to be able to get out into our district and to do their business after work, and use the sidewalks and all the pedestrian amenities that we provide. So with that, if you have any questions about the project, I'll be glad to answer them.
What are the odds of getting any of those massive power poles buried, that the lines buried along, at least your poles are actually done with?
None.
You get zero? You want to be asked about that?
We would love to bury them, but.
Can you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
And we're just talking about the major power lines, a lot of the smaller lines you have been buried.
Correct. We, we have a lot of the, I'll call it utility clutter at the DDI, you see when you put them there. We're in the process of cleaning that up. We've put everything we can overhead. The estimates we got to bury the utilities along Ashford Avenue and the DDI was, was just cost prohibitive.
What was, if you don't mind telling me?
I can't remember. No, it wasn't, it wasn't that estimate, it was, it was cost prohibitive, it wasn't something that our investors were going to pay for.
Is there even a third grant money for that type of program? For the health hazards and the burying? Once you notice something, start looking at it, you get obsessed about wanting to get those things buried.
I'm in, I'm in the process of, we're pulling 11 power poles off of the DDI in the next few weeks and consolidating the clutter, because every time you need power, they stick a service pole, and they seem, they seem to multiply, because nobody thinks about using the same pole, it's already there, so they just put another one next to it. So we're in the process of cleaning that up at the DDI, and Lake Huron, we don't have those issues on Lake Huron.
So how many, how many lights are we talking about, and what is the cost to the city?
For this, we're talking about 46 pedestrian lights, which are the whole mount, I guess they're probably, what, like 10 or 15 feet?
14 feet.
14 feet tall, that are mounted on the ground, and then there's 63 high mass street lights, which are the higher mass that provide the illumination to the roads itself. The cost, as Jennifer said, the PCID is paying about $1 million to actually have the lights installed. The cost to the city, which is the lease agreement that's before you, which is for the power and maintenance of those lights once they are activated, is $2,726 per month. Now, that won't, the cost won't start, or the charges won't start until the project is complete, which is anticipated to be about in October, so it will be really maybe October, November, December that we would pay that this year. We wouldn't be for the whole year. In addition to that, as part of this, too, there is some cost savings, because they are pulling out some lights, about 29 street lights that are currently there now are being pulled out, which is costing about, I think it's a little under $400 a month that we'll be saving this year, because we've stopped paying for those lights now.
What, so those 27 lights are $400 a month?
Yes.
And the 46 are?
It's 109 lights that we're putting in, 109 lights, and there are bigger lights, the lights we're taking out are 150 watt lights, that are all street lights, the lights for the pedestrian lights that were. the pedestrian lights that we're putting in, the 46 are 150 watt, but the high mass, the higher mass lights for the streets are 400 watts, so there are more power.
Any comments left? I'd just like to hear from Mayor Nadel.
Richard and I have talked about, you know, the cost differential of what we're currently paying and what we expect to pay. You know, the good news is, we're not picking this up until late in the year, so we'll be able to absorb the cost more. However, we are looking at a citywide streetlight assessment, and we would think that this is a likely candidate for that. We already have some commercial lighting that's part of the county's streetlight assessment, and so Richard is working with me on identifying those specific lights. We've already had conversations with our city attorney's office on creating that assessment district, so it would be my expectation and my hope that over time, we would be able to add these, so that the energy costs could be collected, and we could, through that assessment, and be able to pay for the additional energy. I mean, it is an additional cost to us, one that was not anticipated. Even though there is somewhat of a reduction by the lights that are being pulled out, there still is that additional cost, even above the reduction that we're receiving. So, over time, and again, hopefully by 2014, we will have that in the system now.
So, we're looking at maybe three months of that?
Yes. If October is the completion date, I would think that billing would then start accruing towards us in November.
And then if we have our assessment?
We have our assessment. We're planning on moving on that in just the next couple of months. Now, those that are already in the assessment program, they will remain. Those that are not, we will be contacting, so we have to bring them on. It's just not an automatic capture, it's, we do have to talk with them. And then those neighborhoods that don't have lighting at all, of course, they're not going to be charged anything, but when they petition the city and ask for lights, which we have had, Richard's already been contacted by a few neighborhoods requesting that, then that will be part of the agreement, so that there's no cost, you know, to the city as a whole, and what we're only looking for is just to be able to cover our costs of energy. Now, if there is any surplus to that, it would be for the maintenance of the lights, replacement, and even looking at trying to work off what the PCID is doing in some of the other improvements in the city, to look at some decorative lighting as well, so there will be some replacements, so that we could have some key features that would identify different character areas of the city.
I think it's, I think there are also benefits to the city, and that it is cleaning up and improving value in the area that we're talking about, the CID. But I do think it's important for the city to look at being able to allocate those expenses to the businesses that benefit from them down the road, because the current setup that Duquette County has used in the past essentially puts the burden of all of the, well, the majority of our streetlights are in the commercial districts, on the residents. I don't know that that's completely fair to the residents.
Agreed, and that's the reason why we're looking at the citywide streetlight assessment, and right now, the county is identifying those lights, Richard's working with their public works department, as to which poles, which fixtures, and the energy running through them still remain to the county, and which ones are for the city of Brookhaven. What our hope is, and how we, Richard and I have talked about this, is that there is a formula that's used on the residential, and there is a formula used on the commercial side. We're hoping that we can reach some kind of fair balance, so that perhaps we have, because we're spreading the cost, we have a lowering of the cost for all participants, and that's the goal right now, to be able to do that, and still be able to cover the cost of the energy, and have some reserve there for when the power company decides to increase the cost of energy, which, you know, Duquette County is looking at right now. Their reserve is running out of funds there, and so they're looking at what they're going to do to cover those costs.
Richard, the borders of the city, especially in that area, a little bit different than what, when you get down close on it, there's like this like a divot up there. Are we making sure to know those streetlights that are not in the city were not included on this?
Yes, and I've already, and on this project, the lights for this project, this project is entirely 100% within the city. There is no apartments outside of it. There was a proposal that came for some pedestrian lights on Ashford Dunwoodie that were in that divot on Ashford Dunwoodie, and I mean, you know, we're making sure that those are going to the right city to be. And working with that city's public works department to make sure that they're, that the boundaries are straight.
For Jennifer or Richard? Jennifer. Does the PCID, does any of the fees for maintenance or keep like this get reflected on businesses?
Well, the businesses at the PCID sell tax, and they are spending $800,000 of that tax money to fund these lights, so they are contributing.
They're purchasing.
Yeah, they're purchasing the lights, and we turn those over to the city. We don't own any infrastructure, we don't own any property.
Right.
The businesses donate their property for these projects, and they put up the matched money for the construction. Normally, they fund the design. The design of this project was over $800,000. Some of that was reimbursable, but a good portion of that, the business has paid for the design, so their investment is upfront on these.
Can I borrow a copy from that design elsewhere?
We love this project.
Streetlight envy here.
And I want to say something about the lights being door to power and the cost of this. These are maintained, this cost is a maintenance as well, so if a car hits one of these lights and it falls down, they replace it. That's a, it's a pretty expensive pole, it's powder coated grain, it's a specialty light. It's under full maintenance. They go after, if there's an accident report, they do it on their insurance, and Georgia Power handles everything. So, if it's out, we call, they come, and they fix it, no matter what problem it is.
Excuse me, that also goes for streetlights, I don't know, light bulbs as well, they'll do replace all the bulbs.
Is there lifespan on these things, or is that maintenance running in perpetuity for lifespan of these poles?
I believe the way it's written in the lease agreement, it's a one-month lease agreement that automatically renews unless the city decides not to, so it lasts in perpetuity as long as we pay or continue to adhere, don't cancel the lease agreement with Georgia Power.
You know that, we've talked about this street scape program before, and we're so proud of it, and it's so exciting to us that this is happening in Brookhaven, and we so appreciate the investment of the PCID in this, but I did want you to be aware that we were having talks even before this came up about trying to share and thus equalize the cost of streetlights, so I didn't want you to be surprised when we come to you and say, well, we'll pay for it this year, but we might ask out of your folks, the commercial taxpayers up there to share in some of the cost at some point, when we get these details worked out.
Right, and streetlights, and the cost of streetlights has come up in Sandy Springs and in Dunwoodie, and I deal with all jurisdictions. The idea of charging businesses has not come up in those two cities, that's a new, that's a new strategy, but I do think it's a.
We've got a new city manager.
I know.
It's a.
But I think there's, you know, there is, everyone's looking at cutting costs, and the other cities have done it in other ways, so you have that as well to benefit from on the streetlight.
Just for clarification, that, you know, the residential property owners are currently charged a fee on their taxability, the commercial property owners are not for streetlights, so all of the commercial streetlights are being paid for by the jurisdiction, and what our proposal, what our thoughts are, is that we need to expand that residential streetlight district to the commercial streetlights, so that we can not be paying for those costs directly. It's not that we're asking them to share costs, we're just asking them to pay the cost of the lights in front of their property, as we do as individual homeowners.
If I could just add a couple of points, and just add on to what Mr. Iyer just said, just for clarification. Well, I think, you know, I think the city is saying, I think the elected body is saying that we want to partner with the PCID. We absolutely see the benefits of that. In our taking over services from Duquette County and examining what their charges are and taking a look at the streetlight assessment, Mr. Iyer is correct, that the residential properties are paying, you know, the majority of the cost. However, upon our discovery just recently, with Richard's help, we've discovered that the county has also included some commercial properties. So, we want to balance the field, make it an even playing field, so that if some commercial properties are paying, we want to be able to include all of them, so that everybody's paying a fair share, and that's where our hope is, that by doing that, we can lower the cost for everybody that have been supporting this program for such a long time. So, what we're looking for is equity, and we're looking at actual costs, and to see, you know, $2,700 by itself is not a lot of money, you know, you're looking at $25 million budget, but it is money that is being expended, and when you multiply that over a total number of lights, and then you add all the other commercial lights that are illuminating the city on the backs of your residential taxpayers, it does deserve a very hard look, and we want to partner with the commercial properties in the city of Brookhaven. We want to do the right thing, and we will always do the fair thing. So, we'll be working on this over the course of the next couple of months. We'll be reaching out to the commercial districts, and we'll be telling those commercial districts who their colleagues are in the commercial world of Brookhaven that are already paying and have been paying for quite a long time.
Thank you.
Any more comments? Richard?
I'd just like to thank, real quick, thank Richard for helping out the folks on Fairway Circle and trying to solve that problem with the fence and security issues that we have. Thank you.
Yes.
Need a motion for him?
May I move, we approve the Georgia Power Lighting Services, any of the city standard lease agreement for perimeter center community, excuse me, for the perimeter community improvement district, the Lake Huron project?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Berke, it has been registered, it has passed. Other business? Is any other business?
Eight, let's move.
Eight?
County City of Brookhaven Solid Waste Management Services.
Oh, yeah, we know it's that one. What did we remove, did it thought?
No, this is the solid waste where they, they've sent us an amended agreement that extends the date to April 30th for determination between whether the city wants one or two times a week garbage pickup, and it extended the date to April 15th to make a decision on your side. Is that correct, Mr. Rook?
That's correct.
So, what do we need to do?
All you need to do is a motion to approve. The agreement is presented with the following changes, that you amend the date to April 30th for notification to the county whether the city elects for once or twice a week garbage services, and the further amendment to amend until April 15th to be the date to notify the county on recycling services.
All right, who got that?
What's the decision on the recycling? What decision? I thought it was only the trash, what, what decision are we making on the recycling services?
Did you pull that forward?
I thought only the one day versus two day change.
That's what we have been notified to this point, so.
I believe what it was, was that we had a certain, there was a certain day in the original IGA by which the city could notify whether or not we wanted one or two days, and they, I believe we passed that date, I believe it was maybe early March, and what we've done is we've moved that date to April 15th to allow yourselves and citizens or just the city to let the county know if we do want once or twice. We're able to push that date back to April 15th to allow.
That's for solid waste, I think she was asking about recycling.
Yeah, we just heard two days, April 30th, April 15th. I'm sorry, I heard two days, three different things.
Yeah, the April 15th wasn't on here, that would be updated.
Article four, section 4.2. It's the city may make a one-time choice whether the city residential property owners will receive sanitation services from the city once a week or twice a week, and that's article four, we've got April 1st there, and we're able to move that back two weeks for two more weeks to figure out, so that the city manager can notify the county as a dedicated assistant if they wanted to do that once or twice a week. So, we're going to two more weeks to determine if we want it once or twice.
Okay, and April 30th for recycling, what was that?
And April 30th date is? On page five, article six, services. The last sentence is, the city manager and the county public works director agree to confer in person or along the before, and it right here, it says March 1st, 2013, to mutually evaluate the cost and benefit of additional recycling options. We will move that back to April 30th.
Do you know what that means? Additional? What does that mean?
Once or, I believe we were talking about once or twice a week?
There was no price on that either. I don't know how about that.
So, they want to cut the solid waste down to once a week, but they want to increase recycling to twice a week?
We could not see anything from the county on that.
No, and this is a little bit different, I think this is different, too, than.
I would defer this.
From the public meetings that they've held with the.
It is, because there was no discussion.
This is all news to us, I mean, this is new information.
I would defer this.
Yeah. There was, the Duquette County, Mr. Gary was right, that there was no discussion of any changes to recycling or any changes to yard waste pickup. It was only changes to the schedule for the solid waste pickup from one to two times a week.
So, motion on board?
I move we defer item number eight, consideration approval, here government agreement for solid waste management services.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
We just need clarification on what the two dates are and what we need to make decisions on.
And the dates that we've been hearing about are all after the next council meeting, so.
And prices.
And prices, too.
Yeah, there's the recycling, the recycling is the current fault, the solid waste, we do about the recycling is the current fault, we need.
I still haven't seen Duquette County adopt a new rate schedule. I haven't seen them adopt one of that.
No, they haven't.
So, I don't even know that.
Well, but we are the option, because it's the city, and that's our rate schedule.
Right, and it was all something that was a proposal, they haven't adopted even changing it yet, so.
And we don't know how this affects recycling from the container size, or what that all means, but we need to take a close look and understand this and see if, you know, the city of Brookhaven is really getting the best deal, and do we need to explore other opportunities?
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor of the deferral, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Berke, it has been registered, this minority has been deferred. All right. Other business? Any other business? All right. Public comments?
I don't think.
Any public comments out there? Richard, you just want to film, not say a word? Okay. All right. Okay, public comments, first, mayor's comments? I'd like to, how many Brookhaven residents are in here right now? Say your hand. I want to take a little informal poll. How many of you would be in favor of going to once a week and paying the same rate that paying Duquette County right now, which is $2.65? And how many, I mean, the next second question would be, how many of you would be going to twice a week and paying $3.05? So, if you're in favor of going to once, to five, to pay the price, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine? All right, right. How many are in favor of twice, keep it twice a week, but paying more money? Two. I mean, it's hard to say in favor of paying more money for the service you already get, but you know, that's what we're being told, so that's what we have to live with, so one of those two choices.
Only one, my son's in college.
That was 92.
Can I take the reason that I vote the way I did on it, because I think that it will encourage society more, that's my reason.
Okay. All right. Thank you. There's no more mayor comments? Any executive session? No. And is there a motion adjourned?
Sub move.
Your second. Any discussion? All in favor of a German, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? This is adjourned.